Welcome back in person. Yeah, I don't know if you were exposed or had it. Thank you for looking out for us.
Make my.
Yeah, well, I do appreciate.
I'm new.
Where are those notes? There they are. I guess I know what the agenda is, so.
Yeah, we probably know.
Would you be willing to read the land acknowledgement?
Sure.
With that, thank you. I call this meeting to order.
It might take me a second to get back to it.
No problem. Councilmember McQuaid is going to read the acknowledgement when she can bring it up.
I'll fumble.
Thank you.
The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Lijan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relations, relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you, Councilmember McQuaid. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McQuaid?
Here.
Councilmember Neeson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Here.
And Mayor Jordan?
Here. And our only item of business tonight, an item of new business, consideration of an urgency ordinance adding a new section to the Albany Municipal Code establishing procedures for filling a vacant seat on the City Council by appointment. May council have staff report if there is one.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and I will keep it brief. This is clearly fresh in your memories, I'm sure. What you have before you is basically a compilation of the direction and consensus given at your previous meeting, your previous special meeting on this topic, which has been assembled into an urgency ordinance. As a reminder, an urgency ordinance with the council as currently seated will require a unanimous vote for approval. You will see there are basically two main parts to the urgency ordinance. One spells out a process, as deliberated at your last meeting, with the consensus elements that were given at that time. A quick summary of those are the application format, the application period, the publishing of the applications and associated information on the city's website, the ability for an applicant to withdraw. Note there that we didn't add a specific deadline for that. It just didn't quite fit, at least in staff's opinion. Steps outlining the selection process, including having the applicants address the City Council at a public meeting, as well as a question and answer period, and the balloting procedure. In the discussion on the staff report here, you see a tentative schedule depending on the direction given by council this evening with regard to your urgency ordinance. The second element of the urgency ordinance is understanding and recognizing, as Councilmember Neeson proposed at our last meeting, that we are in a timeframe around an election. And you see the language there, where should there be a vacancy that occurs 45 days prior to the certification of the election, or six months after certification, that the appointee would be that third candidate. Clearly, I'm summarizing here. I want to give time for the council to discuss the matter and give direction to staff, potentially on any edits. I understand there are a couple of proposed edits, which we are ready to display when directed. And with that, happy to take any questions and really just listen to the direction. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Are there any questions for staff? Okay, with that, we will go to public comment. Not seeing anybody in the room, but there might be somebody, yes, City Clerk. See, she's bringing somebody up.
I don't have, oh, there we go.
Welcome.
Go ahead.
Hey, thanks. I just, um, is this the only time I'm going to be able to comment because I don't know what you're going to say? So I don't know what the amendments are, I don't know what the discussion will be, I don't know. I just, not clear on, again, this happened last time too, where I just want to know if I, the only time I get to comment. But my comment is, and I wrote a letter to this effect and commented the same thing last time, is that I know that if you do include the section on, this is so weird, I'm only seeing my name or David's name, and usually I can see the council when I speak. I don't know why it's different this time. I, my, my comment is that I, I think that since the election was so recent, and, thank you very much, that's much better. And there was a clear message about what the voters, who the voters chose as being coming in third, that it doesn't make any sense to have applicants come and apply, and then this, you, the four of you decide when this, the voters have decided, and I, I would really encourage you to go that direction. And I, I hope that as the meeting goes on and you make some decisions and have some discussions and have some amendments, that, that you allow us to comment again, depending on what you do end up doing. So, thank you.
Dito.
And David says ditto.
Thank you both.
Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. So, I, I have not had a chance to peruse the materials, but I understand, I believe, what's in them. And I also want to comment on the fact that the election is, has just occurred, also on the fact that the numbers are still coming in, will still be coming in for a number of days now. I think that if it's the council's pleasure to, to choose the third person, the council should be transparent about that. I think if the council chooses to create an ordinance, which they mean to be durable, that specifies a numeric calculation about how the, the third person in the election should be selected, or what, what the criteria should be, the threshold, I think that that opens the up, the possibility of you making a decision without fully disclosing the decision. In other words, creating a reason for making your decision, rather than just saying that you want to make the decision. I think everyone wishes that this ordinance didn't have to be created right now, it could have been created a number of years ago. So I urge caution in your being too specific in this ordinance, and having to draft it so urgently, and make it more general, more open, so that you may gather more information, more data about how these things are done in other cities, and, and what are the best practices before you set something in concrete, or set something that you think is going to be durable. That is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, City Clerk. Now it comes back to council for discussion, suggestions.
I'll jump in.
Please do. Thank you.
Well, the one, one thing I'd like to say is, it's, it's always different, and I think that we need to be careful when we need to appoint somebody, it's always going to be different. And so I think, as the last speaker said, we, we want to sort of be general, and I'd like us to really focus on this particular time and this, and this particular situation. I did do some research on the 33 cities of Alameda and Contra Costa Counties to see what they had in their, either their charter or their municipal codes. Interestingly, most of this, I only got results from 13 cities, so the majority, I could not find information codified. That doesn't mean they don't have it, it simply means it wasn't readily searchable for the layperson. And I was looking at their municipal codes, I wasn't looking at every council policy or whatever, but that's just, you know, kind of a piece of information. So at this point, I'd like to offer just a slightly different approach to what we've, what we have in our ordinance. Is that permissible right now?
Please do.
Okay. The biggest piece is section three. Anne, do you have that to put on the screen? It's, what is up there in red, would you like, Mayor, would you like me to read it? Or can you all see it?
And so I had, not having memorized the whole thing, is this a replacement for?
Basically, we are taking out all of the reference to the appointment process, and simply starting with this particular piece, specifically and solely for this time period.
Oh, so it's like a complete sort of what they call gut and amend in the state legislative parlance?
You could say that, yes.
Okay. Okay.
And I do have one other minor change to the ordinance, if you'll give me another half a second.
Sure.
The fourth, whereas, whereas said ordinance, blah, 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 has yet to be adopted, I would just simply remove that section, I'm not sure it's really important at this So basically, what I'm suggesting is that this time and this time alone, we select the third candidate with the criteria listed, which is the same criteria you had originally.
Interesting. I have to wrap my mind around that for a moment. Yes, go ahead, please.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
No, no mind wrapping around it necessarily, I'm ready now. Because I think this is going to mostly repeat comments I made at the last meeting of, I see the, the reasoning here. I would prefer to go with something that can stand up to other circumstances, I think it's important to have something in place that establishes this procedure, so that we don't end up in a situation like this again, so that we don't have to have lots of special meetings, right, after an election, or even just, not even when there's an election, so, so that a future council can look at this and say, here are the decisions we need to make, they are based on this process that has been put forward, that is flexible with what we've, the context we have in front of us, but it has a, has a system in place. And I, I think that's helpful for people to know what to expect in the community, I think it's helpful for the council to know what to expect in that situation. And I also think that it just gets at a, a part of this that we should be, what should be driving our deliberations isn't, about this process, isn't who we would appoint. It should be how we think that appointment should be conducted. So, the, the reason to, to go to, you know, a, a slightly different topic of, you know, should we appoint based on appointment process, or should we base, do it based on the recent election? The argument for doing it based on the recent election shouldn't be because of who came in third, it should be because we think whoever comes in third in a event like this should be the person appointed because we think that's the right thing. And I think that's what should govern our process of how we think this process ought to go, no matter the result, because then we're designed, if we do it otherwise, we're designing the process and to get the outcome that we want. And, and I recognize how this is, is trying to get around that, and it doesn't state that we couldn't do that in a, you know, set down a process in another ordinance, but my preference would be to do that in this ordinance, and, and set that process out based on how we think that process should go in an ideal world.
Yes, please.
In an ideal world, I think it is very undesirable to have an appointed official sit for two years, in this case, more than two years. And I have not seen, when I looked through charters, and I was much less systematic than Councilmember McQuaid may have been, and nowhere near as systematic as I'm sure Mayor Jordan is when he does this sort of thing, but I did not see, it, it did appear to me that the, the usual procedure is to hold the election as soon as feasible, either by holding a special election, or scheduling the election for the next, the next ballot. And we're in kind of an unusual, we just have unusually poor, difficult, challenging timing here. I'm not comfortable adopting a process that would permit this to occur again. I, I think that we would, but I do recognize that we have the charter, we have a messed up charter, and we've got to appoint something within, we've got to do something here. And so I think that this is, that the least bad thing we can do is to go with the person who comes in third when all the votes are counted. I do think it's important to have the threshold because of the problem, and we have it in the, you know, it could have happened in the school district this time around, and it's not unusual in Albany to have a dearth of candidates. And you might have three seats open and have only two serious candidates, but have someone whose name went on the ballot, but then they decided they didn't, didn't really want to do it, and they didn't campaign. And the fact that they come in third is purely circumstantial and has nothing to do with the will of the voters with respect to that particular candidate. So it's important that we don't do that. I like what, I, I recognize what Councilmember Tiedemann is saying, and in a perfect world, I would rather that we carefully crafted a good ordinance that assured that the next feasible election would, that the, that the person would only serve until the next feasible election, until they, someone can be duly elected to the position. But I don't think that we have an, I don't think that we have a best possible, best of all possible worlds option here. And I think that what Councilmember McQuaid has suggested makes a great deal of sense. And I don't think that we're crafting it around a particular person, we all know where the ballots stand, we've seen a shift, we know, you know, something could happen that surprises us. So I'm not saying that this is being done to elect a particular person, not at all. But I think that in, in the unusual circumstances presented here, what Councilmember McQuaid is suggesting is probably the least bad option in a suite of bad options.
I'm flattered.
Least bad option.
Least bad option.
We'll take it.
And that, by the way, has nothing to do with the candidates. It's not about the candidates. The process is bad, is very, very bad here, but we are limited by the condition of the charter, and, you know, and maybe this is a, I don't know if this is a, an example of reason to have a charter commission or to not have a charter commission, you know, but it's, we, we have a problem here and we can't really get around it in an optimal way.
Thanks. The, well, one thing I'm hearing is that it appears, well, I haven't, I think last time, Councilmember McQuaid was, was thinking about whether to take the approach essentially that is on the screen, because we recognize that we needed to have all four council members in support in order for that to take effect. I'm gathering that, since you have brought this forward, that you are now in, in support of this approach, so I do want to recognize that. So the process aside, thank you for thinking about it and researching. And in your research, I don't know what, how many of the 33 cities are actually charter cities, it sounds like you were looking at ordinance or code as well. I would imagine a lot of those just default to the state government code, and I have to say, I don't know what the state government code says in this situation, because we're not in that situation.
Well, and I'm not sure, I don't have to answer that. I was going to say, if you researched Albany, you would probably think that we don't have a process, where in fact, our, this is our process. So other cities may be the same, in the same position, I don't know.
Right. Well, if you researched Albany, you'd see that it's by ordinance, and then you'd go search for the ordinance, and you'd find none, but the, the charters, because I only read charters, none of the other charters that I read referred to an ordinance, they all simply said, an appointment will happen, and if it doesn't happen here, there's the consequences, and/or special election. So I didn't think to look at the government code for kind of what is the default for general law cities. I am, yes, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I did look at the general code, but I'm, I'm not, I don't want to.
Go there?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. I'm, in this conversation, I'm reminded of something I learned, I think, with our last urgency ordinance, which I appreciated from staff, which is that, I don't know if you can call it standard or best practice, is to bring the ordinance back for adoption under the regular process, two readings, take effect for 30 days. So keeping that in mind, an option for this body now is to adopt something that addresses the situation that the city finds itself in at this moment on urgency, with the recognition that if that should be what's on the screen, or approximately there, what's on the screen, we've done this work, and we can bring this forward under the regular process, so this doesn't have to be the, the end of it. So from my perspective, I'm, I don't have a strong preference either way, in practical effect, they have the same result, so it's, it's a matter of the council's desire in terms of process. I do probably have some adjustments, technical adjustments to make to the language that, that's up there, but those would be, as I say, technical adjustments, not adjustments as to effect.
You know, I'd like to go, take a little bit of a step back. I don't think we need to change the charter, because to change the charter is a vote of the people, and we don't, I, I think what's in the charter is fine, you know, because it, it says it's, it's done by ordinance, and that's, I think, where we really want it. I would suggest that the incoming council, at some point, as they have time, perhaps have a ad hoc committee, or a task force, or something, to really study this, because, you know, we've, I'll put, put a little bit of time into this, but the more I think about it, the more questions I have, you know, if the election is, you know, one certain day, how far ahead, how far behind do we want to look, what are, you know, what is the threshold? There's just a lot of pieces to this, and I'm not sure that, I think it needs a lot of study, and probably more than the council at the dais can do. So I would, I would encourage the new council, if they wish, to put a little energy into this and think about what might be good, and bring it back out of a, out of a task force or something.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure I'm in agreement that, that there isn't a problem with the charter. The, the tight timeline rules out a special election, and it rules out, in a more normal situation, where you might have, you know, if it happens in a, a year when there will be a June ballot, it, it even rules out our ability to use the, to the next ballot, I believe.
It says feasible, why would, if it's feasible, why would it rule anything out?
Mayor, I think we're probably going a bit off topic talking about charter amendments as opposed to the agenda item, which is establishing the procedures for appointment.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Okay, so let's not talk about the charter. But let's leave it, an open question whether we have a problem with the charter or not. And, but my, my issue is, you know, and especially at this time in our history nationally, that we be as respectful as possible of the, the democratic process. And I think that, that what, since we can't talk about the, the.
And I think that, that what, since we can't talk about the charter, I suggest that we not talk about the, a long-term ordinance either because we might have a problem with the charter that needs to be examined.
But I think it's fair to say that they could look at it in the future without our getting into the weeds.
Yes, they could look at an ordinance or the charter.
That could all be one piece.
If we simply adopt an ordinance specific to this situation, then nobody is prevented from doing anything in the future that is consistent with the charter and the code.
So I think I hear a preference for the gotten, gotten amend approach. Okay. All right. And you have stated where you reside, I think.
Some thoughts occur, especially because if, as I understand it, we need to be unanimous. And so I'm hesitant to go against the will of the council and blow this up by not voting for it if we wanted to go that route. To me, that's maybe one of the flaws of this process that we've all acknowledged of, that we all have to be unanimous to do this, which is appealing on paper, but in practice gives, you know, whoever they want veto. I, just to speak a little about the process question of how to do this, you know, a future council that two of us will sit on could take this up and decide what to do with it and make it permanent without having the urgency. And that could be a fine way to do it. If we go the route of this gotten amend process, then I'm certainly going to be working on that, on that new council, because I think it's important to have this. I don't think there's anything inherently bad about doing that work, though, in this urgency situation as, while the situation we're in of having to make an appointment is imperfect and has a lot of issues for the democratic process and the governing of the city, it did spur, I think, a very good quality discussion and examination of our procedures and what we could do. The last council meeting we had where we discussed this for about three hours was, in my opinion, one of the most interesting discussions we've had, if we really delved into this process and looked at the options and discussed what are the merits of these as well as what is the, where's the moral weight on us of what to do, of whether to appoint based on election results or based on an appointment process the council could go through. And I don't think that that happened because of urgency makes it not a good discussion that we had or that the product of that discussion wasn't worthwhile because that's often how these things happen in local government. We didn't do this for the years since the last appointment because it never really came up. We were spurred to do it because we landed in this imperfect situation. And so my real ideal preference would still be for us to set that process as we are now because it saves the future council having to do it. It gets this on the books. It takes the good discussion we've had and makes it into something that works for the city in the future. If the rest of the council doesn't want to do that, I am not super willing to blow up the process by holding this up. But it felt important to say that I think this process has been very productive and put out something that I think could really be beneficial and would be a good way to codify this process so that it does not have to come before us again or come before any council again until they are in this situation again. They have to make specific decisions of, now that we have these guidelines, how would we like it done?
Mayor?
Yes.
My specific problem with this is that it doesn't, it doesn't, it provides for the appointment, it doesn't provide for an election for the position to be held at the next election. And I think that that's the piece that is missing. If this were something that were occurring in a typical, in a year when we have a June primary coming up, then I would want to see, rather than having the appointment extend two years, maybe more than two years, I would rather see it placed on the ballot as soon as it can be. If we could work that into what we have, I would feel differently, but I don't think, as I read it, we don't have that option, as I, and as I understood our discussion at the last meeting.
I understand what we have in, currently before we pass anything of this in our charter of the seat comes up at the next feasible election. So in the situation you're describing, we could appoint someone to a position, but that seat would come up in that next election if that election is feasible.
General municipal election.
I was going to say.
Very specific.
It says general. I was going to, thank you for looking at that. I thought maybe it was in there, but yeah, so it could not. It would come up in November.
It would come up in the usual course, yeah.
Right, but it would, it would come up, okay, yes, that's, that's what I mean and when I think these elections should take place anyway.
So I guess I'm still on that if under, and the city manager maybe can upgrade my knowledge, you're under normal process, standard process, best, best practice, I don't know which of those, it's going to come back to the council anyway. And noting that the vice mayor will be mayor, so can certainly assure that it comes back to the council. I guess I don't see the, the big difference. I mean, as he noted, we did three hours of work and more outside of that meeting, which I think was good work and is, to my mind, captured well in the draft that we have. So this draft could be brought back under the regular ordinance adoption process.
Which, which it could, but that's not automatic as I understand. If we pass the version, the amended version and we brought back that amended version, it doesn't necessarily have any of the other stuff in it.
Well, you could put forward replacing, do the gotten amend of that with this.
Yeah.
I think my point is that that's essentially just us proposing a new, like a new ordinance that's, that's going through a process where we're just thinking about a different ordinance.
I know it's messy.
It's so different than what we'd end up passing that I wouldn't really view it as the same process. Like, there's nothing automatic about that of bringing it back. What would automatically be brought back is the much smaller version that we would pass tonight. And I wouldn't see a point in getting, getting and amending that. The more clean option would just be to introduce a new ordinance that includes all of our original thoughts of everything.
Although I can say, if we adopted this, this short version for the moment, when it comes back, I'm going to propose gotten amend. So if nobody else does, I will commit to doing that. And it only needs three votes at that time, not four.
Then doesn't it defeat the purpose of the best practice? Because the best practice is to codify whatever we did in urgency.
Not necessarily. You know, the urgency ordinance, for functional purposes, is something we need to do because there's an urgent situation. You give yourself some time to learn from that urgency ordinance and maybe it's a modification thereof and that's similar to the mobility item that we had where we're learning as we're going and there's probably things we'll need to tweak for the longer term. So I would envision it actually as a very welcome process because it would give you the opportunity to learn as you're going, potentially have a subcommittee, to really do a think tank on it, potentially discuss the flaw of the charter, if that is the opinion of the council. And you may have a two-fold process where you're creating an ordinance, but you're also looking forward to an election to amend the charter. So your second, your standard ordinance, if you will, coming in the next term could completely replace this urgency ordinance and it would say that in the whereas clauses and it would be a new ordinance. So that functionally works completely right for staff's perspective at least.
I could absolutely see a situation in which it seemed worth it to a council to hold a special election, to fill a seat, if, under, under, you know, a set of circumstances that could be imagined, it could be worth the money and the time to hold a special election. And I believe that most of the charters I've looked at and the general city procedures all have that as an option. And I think it should be an option here. So I'm, I'm not comfortable without that. But you guys, you know, I'll be gone soon. You guys can do whatever you want, but for tonight, I'm much more comfortable with something specific to this situation.
Yeah, I think that speaks to sort of my point earlier is, as you go forward, take the time to craft an ordinance, whatever it says, that really meets the needs, giving enough flexibility, but enough framework going forward. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think this kind of urgency ordinance, I mean, it's even got some dates in it, so it's very specific. It wouldn't necessarily come back as the same thing.
Right, it's self-expiring, so it has to be replaced.
Right.
Actually, otherwise we're in the same, you know, leave, leave the council in the same position that we're in with no process, no ordinance. Yeah, interesting point.
Could be good or bad. I mean, I'm not 100% convinced that you need something, but that would be up to y'all.
Right, right. Well, I certainly don't want to have any future council in the position that we're in, so I'd be looking to adopt the ordinance that the charter says is supposed to exist, not under urgency conditions. So, yeah, I'm, I'm amenable to the, the short version, the self, self, self-expiring version. I think there were, if it can go back up on the screen, if, I think there were a few words I might add to it, just to address the fact that we're in a ranked, ranked choice environment. Thank you, City Clerk. It's a third highest number of votes in the final round. And my understanding from email with the city manager, in which she conveyed some actions the city clerk took, which I appreciated, is that the registrar has agreed to run the count down to whether there's only one candidate more than the number of seats to be filled, which is important because otherwise you don't get a good read on what the support is for the candidate. Now, the way the count is now, that would have to happen anyway because of the way things have played out, but we don't know where it's going, so. But given that the registrar has made that commitment, I don't think that that aspect of it needs to be included in here. I think it's just important to stay in the final round.
Should there, should there be something after final round for people that are maybe reading, it's not understanding ranked choice voting at all and it's like the final round of what? So should there be a?
It could be the final round of the ranked choice tally.
Yeah, I think there should be something.
Sure.
Oh, you're off tabulation.
Better word. Thank you.
How about the, I see that the three-fourths, at least three-fourths, isn't, am I missing it or was that intentionally dropped?
I saw it, I saw it copied right out of the other part of the ordinance.
Yeah, this, I mean, what's written here doesn't have a threshold.
Right, I saw it.
Which, again, because of how the count is going, I'm pretty confident that whoever comes in.
It has a threshold here.
Oh, it does.
I don't know why you can't see it. Okay.
It's not there.
Right, let me read this just to be sure that, maybe I sent you some, okay, let me just read the whole section. "In accordance with the Albany City Charter, Section 5.02, the procedure of filling a vacant seat on the city council specifically and solely for November, December 2022 is as follows. Recognizing the fact there was recently a city council election in Albany and there were multiple candidates, two of which were duly elected, the city council shall appoint the candidate not elected for a contested city council seat who received the highest number of votes, provided said candidate received at least three-fourths of the said election threshold of votes to a seat on the city council for a two-year term commencing on December 12, 2022 and ending December 2024."
The provided clause is missing. And could you read that again, that clause, that provided?
Provided said candidate received at least three-fourths of the said election threshold of votes.
Okay. I think that's missing on the screen.
Yeah, it's missing there, but it was. Sorry, I got a little bit lost. You can, you can tell I didn't go to law school.
Oh, wow. Look at that. There it is. Boom. I don't know where you copied that from, but that was fast.
The urgency ordinance.
Oh, okay.
That was where I had it originally.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that. I sent you something goofy.
Yeah, I don't think you need that because if somebody got, made that threshold, nobody else is going to be ahead of them. So, but in the final round, I think you still need it.
Does that look right now?
Can all see that?
Yes, I believe she can.
Okay. Not elected.
I think three-fourths of, I would just say three-fourths of the election threshold for this election. His election threshold is, yeah. And then, you know, need of votes because election threshold is defined in our code already. But I would say, yeah, for, yeah, for this election. Great. Just slightly long sentence. I was taught in technical writing, never have a sentence that goes more than three lines. I think this one goes eight lines. I think that's all one sentence.
And I, it says city council about a million times if we, but I was trying to be as clear as I possibly.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying we should wordsmith it further. I'm just laughing at myself as much as anybody.
My first thought when I wrote it was, oh, I didn't go to law school. You can tell that right here, just right away.
Well, we don't have to worry too much about legislative drafting with an ordinance that is applicable to one.
One instance.
One instance, yeah.
So are you ready for a motion and then public comment or?
I, I think, well, actually, I'm not intending to open it for public comment again because I think this kind of comports with public comment and I don't want to make a, and there was a good reason to do that last time, I think. I don't think there, from my estimation, that's not something I want to tend to make more of a habit. So with that, yes, I think a motion is in order at this time.
Okay, then I'll move, we accept the urgency ordinance as placed, as amended. Does that, does that work? And I, but I also want to include removal of the fourth whereas.
Can I suggest that we keep that recital in just because it gets to the reason for the urgency ordinance that we don't have an existing ordinance to apply?
Okay.
City Manager, did you? She said it, okay. Okay, good deal.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, the version of Section 3 of the ordinance that... It's been moved and seconded, the version of Section 3 of the ordinance, that the draft was brought by Councilmember McQuaid, and it's been adjusted by council input.
Councilmember Nathan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Wow. All that screaming drum. There we go.
Look what we can do when we try.
Okay. Well, with that, we've done our work, I believe, so we are adjourned.
Okay.
Just like that. Thank you for your work, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.